Pastor Ashlyn Place United Methodist Church and remain standing for the pledge of allegiance.
Let us pray. Heavenly Creator, we come before you this morning and acknowledge that each new day is a gift. Let us cherish every breath. Lift up our city. Let it be a place of safety and peace. And I pray for our city council this morning, let their time be fruitful, effective, and without unnecessary strife. But more importantly, Lord, let their hearts and minds be turned toward justice and compassion for those who are suffering and those who are in need. Blessed in this day, make them instruments of your peace. Amen.
Roll call, President Gregory.
Here.
Vice President Richardson.
Here.
Councilmember Manzi. Councilmember Small. Councilmember Williams. Councilmember Davis. Councilmember Rich.
Here.
Statement of rules.
Good morning, everybody. Good to see a nice crowd here this morning, and before we get going, I do want to give a shout out to my assistant pastor, and that's Thomas Erby at Ashland Place United Methodist Church. It's great to see him here. I don't normally get to see him in a collar. Normally, he's a little more casually dressed for our services, so thank you, Thomas, for coming. It's good to see you, and we always welcome our pastors to come and offer the prayer. And I certainly appreciate your prayer of asking for the least amount of strife as possible at our council meeting. That's always good to hear, and certainly something that we strive for. So, thank you so much for coming. Our council rules are very simple. We ask everyone to please turn off all of your electronic devices. If you come to the podium to speak, you'll have five minutes. At the end of those four minutes, you'll hear the buzzer, and that's the indication that it's time for you to begin wrapping up your comments. Give us your name and address for the record, so that we can keep up with you. Also, the mayor is not here this morning. He is traveling. He is in Phoenix, where he has been asked to be on a panel to, for CEOs of cities. This is something that the mayor was invited to do, and they are paying for his airfare and hotel stay, so we're proud of the mayor for being asked to be a part of this panel. From there, he's going on to Chicago, where he is working with members of our chamber and realtors to talk with the executives from SSAB, who, as you know, are planning to move their executive headquarters here to Mobile. And our goal is to make sure that those executives actually live in Mobile. So, they are going up to promote living in the city of Mobile, and we certainly hope that they will be very successful. So, I'm sure we'll hear more from the mayor when he gets back to town. All right, Ms. Lambert, go ahead.
Approval of minutes of October 24th. Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Communications from the mayor's office. Monthly finance report.
Good morning.
Good morning.
September 30th is, as you know, the end of the fiscal year, and the reporting for the end of our fiscal year takes a pretty good bit of additional time, so I don't have a year-end report for you today. But we have not reported August before, and I'd like to do that at this time. Sales taxes into all funds for the first 11 months of the year are down $700,000 from last year, and $11 million against the budget. In the general fund, total revenues are eight and a half million under budget. Against that, departmental expenditures for the year are $13 million under budget. When you combine that with the fact that we did not erode any of the 2% Zogby Reserve, those amounts together will create the carryover that you have approved that's budgeted from 2017 into 2018. It's rather a tight fit, but it appears that that math will work. To give you a comparison, the state of Alabama, you know, which started the year having a pretty good bit of sales tax growth, has settled some too. They're up about 1.8% for the year over last year. We'll be talking this afternoon, of course, about the two proposed bond issues, but in connection with that, I did want to report to you that Moody's and S&amp;P have rated our overall debt, as well as these two upcoming issues, and our credit ratings have been maintained by the two of them. With S&amp;P, that's a rating of AA-. And with Moody's, that's a rating of AA-. So, both of them, you know, have maintained our ratings and have described our financial condition as stable. As we mentioned several months ago, when our normal ratings came out, S&amp;P and Moody's both point to a lot of fiscal management as a positive. They do tell us that our overall debt is elevated. Although it's not as elevated as it was four years ago, we still are above average when you compare our debt to our assets. And so, you know, as we go forward, we hope that that will settle into the normal range. So, steady she goes. Thank you very much. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions, Mrs. Rich?
I don't have any questions, but do you have this in some kind of written documentation? Because I think the public, you know, through at least my newsletter, I'd like to get this information out to them.
Yes, we got these yesterday. Moody's is final. S&amp;P's was their draft. That should be complete by tomorrow.
Okay, great.
And I'll send each of those reports to each of you, as well as asking our communications department to go ahead and make those available.
Great, I appreciate that, thank you.
Thank you so much. Any other questions with Mr. Watch? Thanks, Paul, we'll see you 2:00.
Thank you.
Adoption of the agenda.
Second, discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Appeals, we have requests for wave of the noise ordinance on November 4th on Somerville Street, November 25th on the Grand Drive, and November 4th at James Hills Community Center.
So, move.
Second. Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Public hearing, today is a public hearing to determine if structures at 2668 Hay Street, 1203 Bay Avenue, 761 Wellworth Street, 759 Wellworth Street, 1569 Polk Street are public nuisances and ordering them repaired or demolished.
All right, this is a public hearing. If there's anyone in the audience who would like to speak to any of those, we invite you to come down to the podium. But before you do, I'd like to ask Mr. Doggamba if he would come down and give us a brief explanation of each of these, so that we have the background going forward.
Good morning, David Doggamba, Deputy Director of Municipal Enforcement. The residential structure located at 2668 Haley Street has structural members that are rotten and deteriorated. Walls are deteriorated and leaning. There's indication the roof is leaking. And the yard is overgrown with trash and debris. Notice has been sent to the following individuals of the condition of the structure: Stephen Cromwell, Brown Lee Cromwell, Geneva Hill, Linda Ely, Elmyra Benson, Brenda Bolden, and then also, due to a recorded lean associated with the property, Discover Bank. The next property is located at 1203 Bay Avenue. It's also a residential structure that has the following conditions: Structure members are rotten and deteriorated. The walls are deteriorated and leaning. There's indication that the roof is leaking at this structure. The windows and doors are rotten, broken, and missing. There's also high grass and weeds, overgrown lot at this location. Notice was been sent to the following individuals of the condition of this structure: Evelyn Allen Cole, Albert LaBaron Cole Jr., Derek T. Cole, and Yolanda Denise Cole. At 761 Wellworth Street, it's a residential structure that has the following conditions: That its structural members are rotten and deteriorated. The walls are deteriorated and leaning. There's indication that the roof is leaking. The windows, doors are rotten and broken. And again, the yard is overgrown with high grass and weeds. Notice, the condition of this location was sent to the owner of record of Joseph A. Jordan. The residential property located at 759 Wellworth Street has structural members that are rotten and deteriorated. Walls are deteriorated and leaning. There's indication the roof is leaking. In this condition, this particular site, the roof has collapsed. The yard is also overgrown with high grass and weeds. We've sent notice to the owner of the record, Joseph A. Jordan. At 1569 Polk Street, it's a residential structure that also has structural members that are rotten and deteriorated. Walls are deteriorated and leaning. There's indication the roof is leaking at this location. Windows and doors are rotten, broken, and missing. The yard is also overgrown, high grass and weeds. Notice of the condition of the structure has been sent to the owners of record Katie Allen, Irene Williams, Georgia Abrams, Alfred Taylor, James Johnson, and Henry Johnson. And because of the conditions that I've listed here before you, that render these buildings unsafe and dangerous to the public safety, health, or welfare, I'm requesting that the city council declare these structures a public nuisance.
Thank you, Mr. Doggamba. Any questions of Mr. Doggamba, if all he's here? Thank you. Again, this is a public hearing. If there is anyone in the audience who would like to speak to any of these properties, please come to the podium.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'd like to address the property that's 1203 Bay Avenue.
Okay, can you give us your name and address for the record, please, sir?
My name is Cornelius Allen, Senior. Home address is 1156 Lounge Street, Mobile, Alabama.
Okay, and you're speaking to, which one again?
1203 Bay Avenue.
1203 Bay Avenue, okay.
It's listed to Abbott LaBaron Cole and Evelyn Allen. Evelyn happens to be my sister, her husband is deceased. When that notice first went out, the property was vacant and unused. It had fire and structural damage, and we are in the process of, the lot has already been cleaned. And we're in the process of tearing the house down a little at a time. Came before the city council and hope that we'll be granted some more time in order to complete the job.
Okay, as we announced, this is just a hearing to determine if it is a nuisance and should be repaired. I think lightning struck on yours, how about that? But anyway, it's just a hearing to determine if it does need to be repaired or demolished. And so, you do have some time, but I would ask if you would to speak with Mr. Doggamba up at the top of the stairs, just to let him know what your timeline is and what you're hoping to do, so that y'all can work together on this.
Very glad, thank you very much.
Thank you, sir, appreciate it. All right, if there's anyone else in the audience who would like to speak to any of these properties, please come down to the podium at this time. Okay, with that then, the public hearing is closed.
Public hearing to consider the application of Jerry Riggins doing business as RD Transport Services for a certificate of public convenience and necessity to operate a shuttle service.
All right, this is a public hearing on the shuttle service. If anyone is in the audience who would like to speak to that, please come to the podium.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Jerry Riggins, 8240 Woodland Drive, Citronelle, Alabama. I just wanted to add to that comment. The service is not just for taking people to dialysis and bag, to docs and bag. It's to help people, they need to go to the, to get their medicine. It's also there to go grocery shopping for these people. They really need it, and especially up in my hometown. I want you to reconsider it for us, and I thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it. Again, this is a public hearing, so if there's anyone in the audience who would like to speak to this particular application, you were asked to come on down to the podium. Okay, with that then, that public hearing is closed.
Public hearing to assent to the vacation of an unopened service road which runs along the east side of Cody Road North, north of Ziegler Boulevard.
This is a public hearing. If there was anyone in the audience who would like to speak to this vacation, please come to the podium.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Anderson, home address is 4216 Spring Valley Drive, Mobile. On this vacation, we're with Franklin Primary Health, and we're just looking to vacate that service road so we can build a clinic there for primary care. Since we have federal dollars, we need it removed in order to proceed.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience who would like to speak to this particular application? With that then, the public hearing is closed.
Presentation of petitions and other communications to the council. Reverend Michael Jackson.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Michael Jackson. Ah, not pastor, I'm sorry. I live at 500, 5700 Foxfire Road. I'm still trying to get y'all to Aimwell for somebody. I've served as pastor in Aimwell Baptist Church for the past 41 years. And I witnessed some significant changes in our city and in our city government. I also witnessed these changes in the public attitude of those who serve us in City Hall. This very council and the mayor office itself reflect some of these changes, for which I'm thankful to God and many others, some of whom have passed on to a much better state for making all of this possible. Our beloved city, and yes, our region of the nation, show signs of significant greatness. The mutual respect and cooperation of this council have played an important part in leading us in this most progressive direction, for which I want to publicly thank you. With that in mind, I would like to address the fact that Mr. Fred Richardson has served on this council for more than 20 years. In 12 of those years, I do believe he's served as vice president. And if I'm not mistaken, he was a member of the trade mission that recruited Airbus, All-Stor, and this and that to our community. Mr. Richardson, thank you. Thank you for holding community meetings, and maybe you were one of the first city leaders to do so. Thank you for sponsoring ordinances that created a fund that is transforming our neighborhoods. I'm very appreciative. Now, as a deacon of your church and a leader and teacher in Sunday School, I think I need to talk to your pastor about New Year's Eve moon pie drop.
You might want to have a few words of wisdom with Mr. Richardson here, Reverend Jackson.
Well, you see, me and some of my colleagues and our parishioners are at White Night Service, singing and preaching and praising God and praying for the welfare of our city, our nation, and our world. Many of our people, however, are at the moon pie drop. In all seriousness, though, I thank you for introducing to our city another safe and family-friendly event, for which we need many more. I wish to encourage this council to elect Mr. Richardson as your next council president. May I further encourage you not to let anything outside of us, or even within our city gates, hinder us from the progress we are making as a community. Those 41 years I told you about, I've seen much, most of which I'm grateful of the direction that I see this council has taken. So, let me encourage you to continue the cooperation that bring in progress to our city and our region. Thank you.
Thank you, Reverend Jackson. You know, I too want to echo what Reverend Jackson said about the progress that this city has made. There is no doubt this council has come together like none have in the past. Mr. Richardson and I have served for many, many years, as has Mrs. Rich and Mr. Williams. We have served together. We have worked together in unison, and I don't see that changing. However, Reverend Jackson, you have come in here to campaign for my colleague against me, and I would certainly ask that we don't do that. There has been no vote taken. There will be a vote next week. Discussions are underway, and they are cordial and collegial. And I would certainly expect that those discussions will stay that way. We work well. This man deserves a lot of credit for what's been going on, and we certainly intend to have a big party for him when he retires at the end of this term. So, thank you for your comments, I appreciate it. Always good to see you.
Carol Peterson.
Good morning, I'm Carol Peterson, and I'm 1911 Oakdale Drive. I came here to ask you to consider Fred Richardson as president of the council. You know, I've lived in his district for 20 years, and he's been very helpful. He's done a good job for the 14 years. But I just wanted to suggest that one of the things that was really good was the capital improvements that were suggested. And we now have streets, we have paved sidewalks, getting a Publix, we have all kinds of other wonderful things that are going on, of course, the Greenway. You're shaking your head.
Yes, ma'am, we are well aware of the capital improvement program and how it's funded.
When he says, "You ring, I spring," and he really means it. But he's done a good job, I would like you to consider him. But I just want to thank Fred for what he's done. Thank you all, you city council people, for what you've done. I hope God blesses you and guides you as you plan the future for our beautiful and historic city. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Peterson, Mr. Richardson.
Carol, just stand there for a second. Chief, well, you're not chief anymore, but anyway, we have experienced in Lynnwood a rash of vehicle burglaries almost every night. And we've caught some on camera. The issue was raised in the community as to whether or not the police department could put cameras up in the neighborhood to try to bring it into this. Almost every night, someone is in our neighborhood fooling with the cars. And Carol has served as president of our association for a long time. And people are real, we have had a quiet neighborhood for years, and all of a sudden, we've got these vehicle break-ins inside the community. Is that something, is cameras, is that something that can be considered?
As you may be aware, this problem is not unique to just this particular neighborhood. It's actually occurring throughout the city, and we've been very vocal in that about 70% of the vehicles being broken into are actually unlocked. The reason for the rash of burglaries is to gain access to handguns. We looked at 168 handguns that were taken. 130 of those vehicles were unlocked at the time. And even though not every vehicle carries handguns, it's what motivates people to go and pull on these handles. And a lot of them are young people. We have partnered with many neighborhoods under Project Shield to access neighborhood cameras, or cameras that we can use in order to identify people entering areas, pulling on these corridors. And so, Shield is one of the options where neighborhood associations have placed their own cameras in. City of Mobile has placed cameras in public accessible areas, but not necessarily directly in neighborhoods. Those are mostly handled through the HOAs.
Okay, so, Carol, what I'm hearing is that if the neighborhood association can put up cameras in strategic locations, he is saying that we can tie that in with the police department and go from there.
We've been discussing that on the internet this last week about cameras at the entrance. There's only two entrances. We'd really like to have that made into a call that's that.
You know, we would, access control is always a good idea, but when you only have two entrances, you do have somewhat of an access control. But we'd be glad to give you the information for our cyber intelligence unit. We, right now, maintain over 5,000 camera feeds, and so, a lot of those are private partnerships.
And I have some in my neighborhoods who are doing that, and so, they'd be more than happy to share their experiences and where they're getting the cameras and costs and all of those things.
And we'll be glad to spec those camera systems. We can't recommend a vendor, but we can definitely tell you what specifications are most likely to yield the results we need.
That's great, thank you.
Madam President.
Mr. Davis, go ahead.
If I could just piggyback on this, as Public Safety Director Barber has pointed out, the problem that Ms. Peterson mentions is happening all over the city. And the response, and again, I think, you know, a lot of this is, as you suggest, people leaving their cars open, people leaving things, even if the car is locked, leaving things in sight within the car that people want. A lot of this can be addressed just with our citizens being more alert to what they need to do. But also, we have a number of neighborhoods in District 5 where the citizens are banding together. The neighborhood I live in is in the process of doing this right now, and engaging a firm to provide cameras and then hooking it up to the system you mentioned. So, I think citizen involvement in addressing this, not that the police don't have a role, but citizen involvement in addressing this issue is critical in the sense of what our individual citizens can do, and then what they can do banded together within neighborhood associations.
Something, Mrs. Rich?
On Thursday evening, we had residents off of Hillcrest, which have also seen that uptick. And it was an excellent meeting. Chief Batiste was there and Assistant Chief Godwin. It was very, very well attended. I'm wondering if the Public Safety Director would like to give us some guidance on who to contact, and that way, we can get that information out, because there are many cameras already throughout the city. They need to be pointed at the street, from what I could understand. They don't want to see things added that are not to public realm. But a lot of citizens there are all going to redirect their cameras. But it was, who do they get in touch with? Is it their precinct captain? Is it an identified official within Mobile, you know, PD? So, it's giving the guidance and the way to engage the community to move forward with being an active, a responsible citizen. And, you know, we talked about, don't forget to lock your doors, your storage sheds. All the things that we don't think about really have to be very conscious. But I would love to see some kind of documentation that citizens would know who to call and how to begin it.
I think that'd be very easy for us to prepare for you. And I think it's been quite a while since we've had a public safety meeting at police headquarters to kind of update you on some of the technology that we're using. And so, it may be very good in the upcoming few weeks for us to plan, not only just police, but what we're doing in fire, and provide you with the information that you need to put on your newsletter, so that we can partner with citizens and neighborhoods to address these particular issues. But Councilman Davis is absolutely correct. If you leave your Louis Vuitton sitting on the front seat, it doesn't matter if you lock the door or not. But a lot of them are truly rummaging through these cars, and they are motivated. And most of the handguns that we are taking, used in violent crimes, have been stolen out of cars. And I remind you that Mardi Gras this year, a 15-year-old girl died from a 45 caliber pistol taken at Mardi Gras the very first night, from an unlocked truck. And so, very big problem.
Yeah, it's not just happening in Mobile. We hear about it across the bay as well. So, I think it's opportunity-driven. I've always heard that. If they find opportunity, they're going to keep coming back until they've gone through, like, every car, or every shed, whatever, and they go to a different neighborhood.
You're correct. Not unique to Mobile. It's a trend we're seeing everywhere, and again, motivated by young people attempting to get access to handguns.
Yep. But absolutely, I believe our residents want to participate in making a difference so that they can see a trend that isn't keep gutting up if it comes down.
We'll prepare the presentations, as well as the information sheets that you need to pass on to your constituents.
That would be terrific.
Thank you, Mr. Manzi.
Yes, I just want to address this issue briefly. I hear a lot from
I hear a lot from citizens of District Two on Nextdoor, Instagram, Facebook, you name it, relative to this issue. And the story normally goes, "I left some valuable item in my car unlocked, and somebody came along in the dead of night and took it." The best thing that we can do, cameras are all good, hooking it up to the Project Shield is great, but we got to use some common sense, ladies and gentlemen. If you love it, if you want it, you need to take it in the house, and you need to lock your doors. I don't know exactly what you would expect the police to do, the council people to do, when you left your valuable purse, your wallet, your laptop, your iPad, your gun in the car unlocked. And now, most of us have these devices where we hit a button and the car locks. You don't have to go around each door to lock it. Lock your door, and if you want it, show you want it by taking it in the house. No need to write me on Nextdoor, Instagram, "Somebody broke in my car," and I ask you the first question I'm going to ask is, "Was the car unlocked?" 98% of the time, the car is unlocked. You're almost inviting somebody to take what you don't want when you don't lock it up, and when you don't want it enough to take it in the house. Lock your door, take it in the house. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Manzi. Those are certainly some words we all need to take back into our communities, because we all hear the same thing. And Carol, I want to thank you for coming down and supporting Mr. Richardson and all of the council members. You are a great tourism ambassador. We thank you for what you do with being a great promoter of the City of Mobile. And I know that everybody in this audience knows that this council, in the last election, came back in a huge way. Five of us were unopposed. The mayor came back. All of our council members won by tremendous margins. I think that shows that this city was happy with the leadership and happy with the direction that we're going. So, thank you for coming. I think every one of us in this, on this dais here, could have people coming down just like you did and supporting Mrs. Rich, me, Mr. Davis, Mr. Manzi, and Williams, and Small for what we have done. And they probably all think every one of us should be president of this council. So, as we go forward, I just, you know, thank you for that. Appreciate it. Certainly appreciate everything Mr. Richardson has done, and I know he does a lot in his district. He would not have been elected this many times had he not.
Can I ask one thing of Mrs. Peterson? How are the ghosts doing, especially this time of year? I know that you have shown so many people that come through your ghost tours. Are they really pumped up this time of year with Halloween?
We do it. Every month, every day, every night, and we have, we've seen ghosts.
Oh. Now, we need to go out on that, Ms. Peterson. We need to go out and see those ghosts. Can we adjourn and go now?
Madam President.
Mr. Richardson?
Carol has a machine that can identify the ghosts. Otherwise, if you want to know whether or not a ghost is in your house, I'll tell you who to call. Call Carol. She turned the machine on, and she will show you. Of course, I don't want to see the ghosts in my house. I'm not...
You just want to live with them in harmony, right?
Right. Because so far, they have not done anything, they have not said anything, and I don't want her to go over there and get them all worked up, and then I can't stay in the house. But she did tell me she could take me on the run with her, and she can actually show me the ghosts.
Ghosts. Ghosts, plural.
Yeah. So, I don't have enough nerve right now, but one of these days, I'm gone.
Well, I was going to say, you know, Mr. Richardson has a cat at home, and so Squeaky, when Squeaky gets all excited and starts jumping around and doing things, he's probably seeing those ghosts.
That might be true.
That you're living...
But I don't want to see...
But you don't want to see them. I understand. I understand completely. All right. Thank you. Anybody else who were at it? Ms. Lambert?
Reverend Frazier?
David Frazier, 3708 Longridge Drive, Mobile 36693. Madam President, I have attended a number of council meetings, starting back on the Dow, all the way through consecutive. Most of my meetings, I sit and I watch. I pastor Revelation Baptist Church, and I think I have members in each district. I hear pros and cons from the council. But I do think, as I've watched over the years, I've seen a number of changes, and I've seen a lot of collaboration, and I think that's a positive for our city, and I want to thank you for that. However, I did come, and Madam President asked us to kind of refrain from sharing what we want to, so I'll make it as brief as possible. I found that most of you all are approachable, and that's a good thing. On last, well, this year, last school term, I had citizens, excuse me, I had students to come through the office, and you all entertained them. I thank you for that. But I found Mr. Richardson to be a credit. Some years ago, while pastoring in another area in his district, he did not consider me to be too young, and he allowed me to take part in the process. And I do think that he is a credit to the council, and I hope that you all are collaborating together on how you all deal with the public. So, I want to thank him for that, and so that I said I would be brief, that he would be considered, and thank my colleague, Dr. Jackson, for sharing a lot. So, I'll say that, and I'll take my seat.
Thank you. Thank you, Reverend Frazier. I appreciate that. And I also appreciate your willingness to maybe delete some of the comments that you had originally intended to make. You know, we are a sitting council. I am a sitting president. He is a sitting vice president. We have not voted. We will not vote until next week, and I feel like it is inappropriate to come down here and campaign for any one council member above another prior to us voting. It is something that this council will vote on. We are certainly in discussions with each other. So, we want to respect each other. We want to respect the positions that we each have and the jobs that we are doing. So, that's what I'm asking.
Reverend McFarlane?
Good morning. My name is Cleveland McFarlane, Jr. I'm a pastor of the St. Peter Baptist Church here in Mobile, Alabama. My address, 1525 West Carlout Drive. I'm also the moderator of our state convention and the vice moderator of our national convention of our denomination. I came here for really two reasons. One of the reasons is that I want to commend this council. Let me commend you for your work, your dedication, your service, and working together as I've heard here today. Next thing I want to share was that my national convention board meeting will be here in Mobile, and I'll be looking for all of you to come and share with our president and all of our delegates as they come to Mobile. The second reason, the next reason I'm here is to do what the president said that we should not do, and I do understand that. But let me do this. I'm here also to support Mr. Richardson. And the reason I'm here to support Mr. Richardson is because he's a progressive, productive, and he also loves the people. I've passed it here for about 28 years. Next year would be my 29th year. My anniversary is March the 1st. I look for all of you. But I just wanted to share with you because Mr. Richardson is one that loved this city, and I know he loved this council, and I know that he speaks and speaks very passionately. I think he's about like me. When we love something, we give ourselves to it. So, I want to encourage this council to support Mr. Richardson. Sorry about that, Sister President.
Yeah, I hear you are doing exactly what I asked you not to do.
I know, but that's what I came for. Thank you for listening.
Reverend McFarlane, I would not have expected any less of you.
Madam President, if I... Madam President, I have a question for Reverend McFarlane.
Yes.
Now, when is your national convention going to be?
Our national board meeting will be here on January the 8th through the 11th. Our president, all of our great dignitaries will be in town. I really hope to bring a few here to speak with you if I could get the president to do that. We're going to have a banquet, so we look forward to you to come and share with us at our banquet, which will be on the 10th. On the 8th, we are going to have a concert. Lovely singing. We're working on it now. We've had artists to come in to train and, you know, have rehearsals with our choir. So, we're looking to have a really wonderful time, and then I'm just excited to just have it come back here to a place where I call home.
Well, I appreciate your taking this opportunity to highlight the City of Mobile with your group, and certainly hope that, and you said you would, but certainly hope we have an opportunity to interact with your group in a meaningful way while they're here.
Thank you.
Reverend McFarlane, before you leave, where will your event take place?
Downtown at the convention center.
Convention, okay, convention center. Just be sure to let us all know so that we can come.
Certainly, I'll do that. Thank you.
And then, yeah, we certainly do invite you and any of the guests that you have to come down and meet us and tour and anything we can do to help, we certainly will.
I'll always be calling on you. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate that. And I like your three Ps. And let's go back over when there was a...
Four Ps.
Progress.
Passionate.
Passion, progress.
Progress.
Personality.
Yeah.
Perseverance.
People, perseverance. I like those. We need to make sure we write those down, because I think really and truly that they are a good way of describing this entire council.
Right.
So, thank you very much for coming. Always good to see you. We look forward to...
Thank you. Thank you for listening.
Your board meeting. All right.
Madam President.
Mr. Richardson?
I would like to thank all of those who came down, but I would like to make this comment that Fred Richardson is not the source of divisiveness. It was a local newspaper that put it all out there. It got the people all stirred up, not Fred Richardson. And in fact, the reporter for the newspapers in here.
All right, let's just blame it on the media then.
I'm not, this ain't no blame. I'm telling you what the real facts are. Went on to talk about what going to happen to Caucasians if they supported Fred Richardson in depth and foolishness. Somebody sold it, it got the people in the communities all disturbed, and they came down here to let us know what they were disturbed about. So, I don't have not anything, I don't know no rule against them coming down here. But I'm saying, I was not the source of that. It was published, a whole page, race, 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 and they use, it's like going to a bullfight where the matador pushed this red flag after Fred Richardson was put out as the red flag. They lifted me out there in order to say what they want to say to divide this community. It wasn't me, and I appreciate all y'all for coming.
All right. Thank you. All right. Ms. Lambert?
Ordinance is held over 64040, rezoned property at 1610 Union Street from R1 to B1 and 64041 rezoning property at 1625 Union Street from R1 to R3.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I'll let the record reflect that Mr. Williams is here.
Thank you, Madam President.
Resolution is held over 09686, reallocating monies from Capital Project Civic Center to Capital Project Facilities Assessment.
So moved.
Second. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
21687, authorized contract with Robert J. Baggett for gangway preventive maintenance technician service contract, City of Mobile, Alabama Cruise Terminal.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
21688, authorized contract with Johnson Controls for service contract, chiller service and maintenance various City of Mobile facility locations.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
21689, authorized amendment to the contract with CBRE for facilities condition assessment and development to facilitate a community workshop for the Mobile Civic Center redevelopment.
So moved. Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Ordinance is being introduced for the first time, 84042 through 84043.
By Council Rules, all said ordinance would live for one week.
Ready?
Consent resolution is being introduced for the first time, 03692 through 4700.
Motion for the suspension under rules for immediate consideration of Resolution 03692 through 4700.
Second. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
03692, appoint Margaret Fowler to the History Museum of Mobile Board.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion?
Yes, ma'am. I would just like, Mrs. Fowler is with us today, and she's back there. If you would stand up for a minute and let everybody see. Thank you very much for your willingness to serve in this important position. History Museum is one of our most wonderful venues in the City of Mobile. You're doing a great job over there, and I know that that board will be enhanced with your presence. Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
If there's no objection, I'll take the next three together.
Fine. Go ahead.
37693, 9495, recommending approval to the ABC Board for issuance of a nonprofit tax exempt license for the Historic Mobile Preservation Society for Bourbon and Barbecue Locally Place, and for issuance of a retail beer table wine off-premises-only license for Murphy Express on U.S. Highway 90 West, and for issuance of a retail beer table wine off-premises-only license for Dolphin Street Shell on Dolphin Street.
So moved.
Second. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
4696, 97, 98, 99, and 700 are declaring structures, public nuisances, and ordering them demolished.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion on any of these? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
CIP resolution is being introduced for the first time, 21701 through 21702.
Motion for the suspension of rules for immediate consideration of Resolution 21701 and 21702 would live for one week by Council Rules.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
21701, authorized contract with Jay Hunt Enterprises General Contractors for Copeland Cox Tennis Center Drainage Repairs Courts 5 through 8.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? This is in my district. It's something that is sorely needed out at the tennis center. We have a lot of problem with drainage issues out there because of the way the land is, and in order to keep the tennis courts up, we have to make sure that the drainage works, otherwise those courts would be sinking, and people would not be playing. We wouldn't have tournaments. So, this is a CIP project and very much needed, so I appreciate your support. Any other discussion?
Madam President, I would just like to point out that we're just going by rule. There's some new folks watching and listening today, and if it is over $50,000, then we let it lay for a week. And if it is not, no matter where it is or no matter what it is, if it is less than 50, then it will be passed today, because it has gone through a scrutiny through the CIP program. Thank you.
Correct. All right. Anybody else? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Resolution is being introduced for the first time, 01703 through 47709.
By Council Rules, all said resolution would live for one week.
Call for public hearings, 41710. Call for public hearing to consider the application of C. Archer Small, Jr., doing business as Port City Limousine Service for a certificate of public convenience and necessity to operate a limousine service scheduled November 14th.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? This is one, I don't know, we might have to have a lot of scrutiny on this one. And you notice he's not here today, so we can't tease him. All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Announcements.
All right. Let me start on my left with Mr. Manzi.
Thank you, Madam President. I want to thank Pastor Scott, officers at the Mount Olive Missionary Baptist Church, Lexington Avenue, Mr. Jamie Roberts, Ms. Beverly Reed, Mr. Christopher McGadney with our Neighborhood Planning Department for the Very Informative Housing Rehab Grant Workshop that was held on last Tuesday evening. that was held on last Tuesday evening. We had about 150 citizens contact, come out, rather, and learn about the requirements, the application process, the dos and the don'ts as it pertains to grant funds for housing rehabilitation through our city's Neighborhood Development Department. I'm appreciative of Mr. Roberts and Ms. Reed and Mr. McGadney for coming out. And we're going to hold another one probably after the first of the year because I've been contacted by so many who could not come due to job or other responsibilities but are certainly interested in that process. So, I'm appreciative of them for their time and energy. They stayed to answer all questions well over, past 8 o'clock, and I'm just appreciative of having their willingness to come and to inform the community of opportunities that they can avail themselves of. I want to thank the Neighborhood Association at Detante Square. We had, they had their first neighborhood fundraiser at Kitchen on George on Saturday, and they invited me to come and be their special guest. It was well attended. I hope lots of resources were raised. I want to appreciate the president, Ms. Sarah Vonion Steele, Mr. Bob Isakson with Lafayette Land Company, and all the residents there in Lafayette Heights, not Lafayette Heights, but Detante Square for coming out on Saturday at Kitchen on George. That concludes my announcements, Madam President.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Daves?
Thank you, Madam President. Once again, we will have a District 5 community meeting a week from today, November 7th, at 6:00 p.m. at St. Pius, the 10th Catholic Church on South Sage Avenue. Hope to have Mayor Stimson there. We're going to have Public Safety Director Barber and Public Services Director Harkins there also. As mentioned, there will be a finance committee meeting, a city council finance committee meeting this afternoon at 2:00 in the council conference room. We have two pieces of business. One is a proposed refunding of a portion of the city's debt. This will not involve any additional debt. It will not extend maturities. It's an opportunity for us to reduce our interest cost with respect to this portion of the city's debt. We will also, after we deal with that, we will also look at an extension of the extra penny in the sales tax. When the council extended the sales tax, that, that extra penny, a little over three years ago, we set a sunset provision for the end of this fiscal year. That, those, those funds have been used to largely fund the capital improvement plan, and we will be looking at a proposed extension of that extra penny in the sales tax for an additional period of time. So, that'll be today at 2:00 on the ninth floor conference room. Thank you, Madam President.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Richardson.
Thank you, Madam President. On tomorrow, I have been invited to speak at the University of South Alabama, my alma mater, on the issue of the African-American family. I have a lot of information on that subject, and I can't wait. I would like to take this opportunity to invite the public to join us for the public inauguration of all our public officials, elected officials, the mayor, and all council members. This event will be held on next Monday at 6:00 at the Arthur Aura Outlaw Convention Center. So, asking the public to come out and be amazed and watch it.
All right. Just as an aside on that, we will actually be taking our official oath of office at 10:00 here on Monday, and that's where the election of officers will take place. So, the 6:00 p.m. event that Mr. Richardson was referring to is actually the ceremonial inauguration. It's also where you get to hear each of us speak. Eight people will be speaking that night, so get ready.
Some of us will take a shorter period of time.
Yeah. Our attorney over here says five minutes each, that we have to restrict ourselves to the same, same amount of time.
Speak for yourself.
That we, you know, hold our guests to. We'll see if that works. All right. Mrs. Rich?
Thank you so much. As I mentioned earlier, on Thursday evening, there was a very productive meeting with residents off of Hillcrest from about Carriage Hills all the way down to Gerby Road, and we had a great representation. And also Sugar Creek, that's seen a uptick. I'd like to again thank Chief Batiste and Assistant Chief Godwin for taking the time, and they really did take time, to answer questions, and they engaged everyone who was present. The takeaway was, once again, lock your cars, take your valuables inside and, at any time during the day, and also lock outdoor sheds and utility rooms. And that is something that we do have to be very conscious. They mentioned about calling 911 in an emergency, but to use also the non-emergency number, 2087211, for any kind of suspicious behavior so that the city could be aware and perhaps check out if need be, understanding that it is a non-emergency and they are already very busy, but they will certainly document any calls that they get from citizens. Again, that number is 2087211. And also, they talked about the Project Shield and wired up the community of what that means, and that is a very impressive program in our city. And the police are dedicated. They do not monitor the information, so it's not like you have a monitoring service. It's more forensic and looked at after the fact. But again, they need to cobble all of these cameras together and have it from, throughout the city. And I look forward to the information that will be shared with council members so that we can get this information out to our communities. And there's also an interest of HOAs and community groups putting in cameras at entry points, and that was discussed as well. And again, I thank them very much for their time. I know they're very busy gentlemen. On, on Saturday, November 4th, out at the Environmental Study Center off of Lloyd's Lane is, I mean, Gerby Road, excuse me, is an open house. This is a free event, and it's wonderful for children of just about all ages to come out, and the hours are between 10:00 a.m. and 2:00 p.m. And on Sunday, November 5th, out at the Connie Hudson Senior Center is a vendor's bazaar. And this is something that is a new event. It's put on by the Connie Hudson Senior Center Foundation, which is a totally nonprofit group that all monies raised go back into the center for extra amenities and, and programs and projects. And again, that is Sunday, November 5th. It's a holiday bazaar. And also, there is a person out there who is giving part of her proceeds. Her name is Morgan Joy Woodward, and she does photographs with children and Santa. So, if you're thinking of your Christmas card, I'm sure it can be a family as well. And again, some of her proceeds will go towards this foundation, and I hope to see you out there. It's between the hours of 11:00 and 6:00 p.m. So, I hope we get a good crowd to come out and see all those vendors. Thank you.
All right. Mr. Williams?
Thank you, Madam President. I'd just like to remind everyone of the Veterans Day weekend approaching. There are events starting in Tillman's Corner this weekend and across the bay with a parade on the 4th. They will continue all the way through the 11th and 12th, but on the 10th is when the nation will observe Veterans Day. And there is, there are plenty of opportunities in this great veteran community to, to say thank you and, and do it with your time. We would, I'll be around, and if someone needs information about some events, they simply need to call our office, and we can help with that. I'm not sure if it was mentioned, but, so forgive me, but I ask everyone to be careful tonight. It is, there, there's going to be kids darting around, and they may be coming out from behind big trash piles that have yet to be picked up. Now, we're working as hard as we can to pick up all those trash piles. I've been assured of that. But there, there's going to be some unavoidable obstructions. We just really need to go slow and take our time and be respectful in the neighborhoods that we go into. Lastly, I would like to remind everyone that every event that we do is a public meeting. Anytime that, that a majority on a committee or a majority of this council gets together, it is a public meeting. Whether or not it's our 9:00 meeting when we discuss a lot of the details of the, of this agenda, or it is our inauguration ceremonies. The inauguration, there was invitations sent out, and some have misunderstood that, that they were not invited. Everyone is invited. There were just some personal invitations, I say personal, some invitations that went out as a privilege of the council and the mayor. So, I, I look forward to the upcoming ceremonies. Hope that you will join us. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. And we were talking about the break-ins earlier, and Marion Steinfeld's just sent around something that the Mobile Police Department has, and it's a great little email that we can send out. It says, "Breaking news, the Mobile Police Department has found a magic button that prevents more than 75% of auto burglaries." And what it is, it's a key fob with a circle drawn around the lock. So, that's something that we will be sure to send out in our newsletters. I think it certainly tells the story. Couple of, couple of events in District 7. I have a community meeting coming up this Thursday, November 2nd, at the Botan, at the Mobile Botanical Gardens. A number of special guests have been invited. The mayor is unable to attend, but we'll certainly have a slate of others who will be there to talk about our capital improvement programs as well as any crime issues in the area. So, please make your plans to come and join us 6:00 at the Mobile Botanical Gardens. Also have already scheduled my Christmas meeting, which will be December 5th at the Mobile Museum of Art. This is the event where every year we recognize our public safety officers and all of our community leaders, the community action groups, neighborhood associations. We bring gifts for the children at Wilmer Hall, which is the orphanage over in our district, and we also have refreshments. So, it's a great time, a fellowship for everyone in the district, and we just look forward to, to both of those events. Postcards have gone out, of course, for the one Thursday evening, and soon they'll be going out for the Christmas meeting as well. So, unless there are any other announcements or discussions, then we are adjourned. Thank you very much.